Fine.
Do you think we could serve popcorn at these meetings?
I think we could make that happen.
Maybe one time?
Sure.
Yeah.
I would use Wheelock's.
Do we want, do we want to wait?
Let's give Sonny a few minutes.
He's, he is going to be late. He called and said he was on his way, but he was going to be a little late.
How about Larry?
Haven't heard from Larry.
I can't hear him.
Let me, let me test.
He's usually early.
I'll call him.
Yeah.
You're gonna call him?
I'm calling him right now.
Oh, Larry, I got a missed call for Larry.
Not like him to just not show up and tell us. Larry.
Jammed up in Atlanta.
Where are you, Larry?
He didn't leave me a message. So... Oh, he's in traffic.
So he says?
Larry says.
Don't rush.
Five minutes or so in traffic, Larry.
Oh, okay.
Don't rush.
So we'll wait.
We don't need to.
How are those pipes, Carol?
Wow. That's, that's fun, isn't it?
Amazing.
Yeah.
You know, I heard, I heard that in DC it was so cold yesterday that the Democrats all had their hands in their own pockets.
[laughing]
We're gonna do one more.
No, it's ridiculous.
Do we want to do the pledge?
Here's Larry.
Hey, you know, I just noticed something.
That's exactly.
How are you?
I just noticed something. Fifty-five years ago today, I went in the Army.
You know, Larry's horrible. I will leave it in your table. You don't want to speed through that stuff.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners' special budget meeting. Today is Wednesday, January 8th, 2014. We're sorry about the delay, but we're getting started now. If we could all stand and do the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The special budget meetings for Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners have been set. The purpose of these meetings is to discuss department budgets. The initial meeting will be discussed schedule and strategy for future meetings. So if you plan on attending, then if you have disability, please let us know. And at this time, we will have roll call.
Commissioner Wheelock?
He's late. He'll be here.
Traffic is horrible.
Really?
Early out there.
Thomas?
Yep.
Rennie?
Here.
Max Bauer?
Here.
Lathrow?
Here.
Inman?
Here.
Chairman Lemecool?
Here. Okay, next is the first public comment. Just want to say thanks to Bonnie for looking at rearranging the room. So now we will have a podium for people to stand up instead of having to fight through the chairs. And appreciate the redoing of that. And we also have a time clock there so that we keep track of the amount of time. So Jack, if you could read the first public comment?
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding the time needed to answer commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, but shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment will generally be received at any time during the meeting regarding a specific topic currently under discussion by the board. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the board until called upon by the chairperson.
Thank you for, is there anybody in the public that would like to make comment at this time? Seeing none, we then go on to the discussion. Before we get into the discussion, I've had a couple of requests on changing our time, mainly because of the security that has to be hired. So the recommendation is rather than going from four to six, that we go to from five, or from three to five. Because otherwise, we have to hire security for another two hours.
Is that for both days?
Well, Friday in particular, if we can do it Wednesday, that's fine. It's not necessary, but it would be nice if we could be, for continuity, so everybody understood that, you know, that our meetings would be at a regular time at a certain time. So I'm asking that we might want to look at changing our meeting times to three to five on Wednesday and Fridays, if that's fine with everybody. I need a motion.
I make a motion that we change our budget meetings from three to five on Wednesday and Friday because we'll have better security.
All support.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? No, Charlie?
What time will our regular meetings meet then?
Seven.
Still seven, okay.
Oh, Jesus.
Unless you want to change those too, I don't care.
Do you want to change them to six, Dick?
Do I go six?
We can change it to six.
I don't care, but I can't see screwing around in town for two hours.
I'd rather go six.
We could go to Nolan's.
Huh?
[laughing]
We have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Pardon?
I said aye.
For yes or no?
For no.
Oh.
So are we at six or seven for the, is that a different motion?
I'm gonna make a different motion.
Chris?
I would move to reschedule our regular Wednesday committee meetings as long as we have our budget meetings to 6:00 PM.
Second.
Are you looking at this just during the budget meetings?
Yes.
Or is this for the whole year?
Yes, just during the budget meetings. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Dick, I hope that takes care of that concern.
Board meetings will still be held at seven then?
No, six.
No, six.
Board meetings as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Because the motion was committee meetings.
While we're doing the budget discussions.
And, and board, I thought I said committee and board.
You just strictly said committee, so you did want board, the full board meeting in there as well?
As long as we're having budget meetings, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Please, do I need to make a separate motion, Jackie?
Uh, we can just, do you want to make an amendment?
Please.
Okay.
Agreed with the second.
Okay. All those in support, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. So, next on the agenda is our discussion on strategy and how we want to set up our meetings and what kind of questions we want to look at as to what everybody would prefer. Dave, do you have anything you want to start with?
Sure. It seems that, you know, everyone needs to know what, what you want them to do. And in order to figure out, I've given you a, a list. And this list had some times on it. It said shorter or longer on it. I think it, as a way of proceeding, you kind of need to figure out what you want the budget presentations to be about. You know, the more direction you can give to the departments and elected officials on what information you want them to provide, the better. So, we should probably discuss that. What, how, how that should proceed. And I'm sure you're going to have, it's going to be two pieces. The departments are going to talk to you about what they do and how they do it and their staffing and so forth, and their budgets. You may want to get, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly what you want yet, so I'll leave that discussion to you. But in the, you'll have another piece where there'll be a question and answer period. And so I would take this, for example, if you were to look at the first one on the list as Board of Commissioners for 30 minutes, on the longer thing, it would be maybe 20 minutes of presentation and 10 minutes of questions and answer. We would need to define, you know, for these departments, how long you want to hear, you know, how long of a presentation you expect from them and how much discussion time you want with them. And then you just, if you really want this to work, you're going to have to stick hard with these numbers. Because then you can schedule it. Then you can say, okay, we got three 30-minute sessions, or we got four 30-minute sessions and we're gonna, you know, Department one, two, three, and four are going to come to us and we're going to be done by five o'clock and that's it. And if we need them to come back later, then we'll have them come back later and talk about various things. But you need to really stick to a tight time schedule if you want this to work well. And if that makes sense to you, I would say that, you know, the two things you need to do is decide what, what questions you want to ask departments, what, what you want them to address in their presentations. And then how much time for each department that you want to take. And you might, might look at some of these departments and say, well, we really don't have a lot to talk to these folks about. I mean, if, if you don't want to talk to the township fire people, or, you know, or you just want a presentation from us on that, on what that is and what, why we pay $25,000 a year for this, that, or the other thing, we can do that too.
Yeah. Chris?
I was truly hoping Commissioner Wheelock would be here to talk about this. Since he's not, I will begin. Yesterday, after the Commission on Aging board meeting, in whiteout snow, I drove out to see Commissioner Wheelock at his place of business. The look on his face when I walked into his office was like a MasterCard commercial, you know.
Priceless.
Priceless, yes. And when I walked in, and I will share this with you, his parking lot was not plowed. And I'm out there in my little Prius without snow tires. And I said, you know, Sonny, I said, your, your parking lot is not plowed. And I said, I don't know if I'm going to get out of here. And I said, you might be stuck with me today. And he said, Chris, we will push you out.
Speak of the devil in a walk in the dark.
Speak of the devil. And one of the things that Commissioner Wheelock said to me yesterday was one of the things that we need before we proceed. And as I said moments ago, I wish you were here to say this, Sonny.
He still can.
Yes, he still can. What we need are, from departments, before we really take our first steps, is a list of services they provide, how much that service costs, and how many citizens, how many people that service serves. Am I saying this correctly, Sonny?
Pretty much.
Okay. I really do believe that dog and pony shows are wheel spinning. And I would prefer not to go down that route if we don't have to. And I really just, that's, that's my idea of our first approach. Actually, it was Sonny's idea, I just repeated it today.
Welcome, Sonny, thank you for being here.
Hi, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, can you?
Some of us still work for a living.
Pardon?
Yes, sorry, some of us still work for a living.
No problem.
So Chairman, if you could advise Commissioner Wheelock of the changes that we just made.
Sonny, we, before you came in, we, we moved to change our meetings from three to, from four to six to three to five, and committee meetings starting at six.
That's both on Wednesday and Thursday and Friday.
So committee and board meetings, so during the time of these budget meetings. Only during that time.
All budget meetings, three to five, and then the committee meeting is six.
Right.
And the board meeting is six.
Toothless dogs.
Does anybody else have any other questions that they think would be important to have the department heads and elected officials to address? Larry?
Well, they know their budgets as well as Dean does. And, but they know the integral day-to-day operations of their departments. And what I would like to ask all of them to do is to do some deep soul-searching within their operations and their budget and come to the board and say, these are the areas where, this would be in conjunction with what Commissioner Max Bauer and Commissioner Matt Wheelock are saying, is that not only do I want the factual data of what programs and services do we have and how many people are using them, so we can determine whether we should even be involved with them because of the, of the impact or no impact to the community or very low impact. But what they can do to be, as Commissioner Lathrow has mentioned a number of times, innovative to the extent where they could potentially restructure their, their, their department to save money, to become more efficient. Second, what programs, if they were asked to reduce their budget by 5%, where would that come from? How would they make their department more efficient? And thirdly, how they could potentially increase revenues within our, within our department as well? So, you know, we'd have, we'd have an offensive and defensive kind of, of discussion with them and, and have them come in and not just, like Commissioner Max Bauer indicated, give us a showcase of what they do and how important it is. I want them to come in and tell us, okay, this is what I can cut. These are the low-impact things that we do, that, you know, if we're going to remove something, this is what I'd recommend. And this is how we can gain revenue. And this is how I can restructure my, my department to become more efficient. This is how we can reorganize things. This is how we can think differently out of the box. This is how we can share resources with other departments within the county to save money. And, and, and these are the monetary dollars that this would equate to. That's what I'd like to hear from them.
Other? Mr. Sonny?
I guess, you know, the things to me, you know, and Chris touched on the conversation that she and I had, and I've had conversations with some of the rest of you, you know, in regard to, you know, we need a list of all of the services we provide. You know, that's the first thing. In order to prioritize what services are being paid for by the county, we need a list of exactly what services, you know, to the best of everybody's ability, what services we do provide. The other thing, you know, I am a firm believer that the only way we make the kind of budget, you know, adjustments, I guess we'll call them instead of budget cuts today, that we're, we're talking about having to do here, is by changing staffing. And one of the concerned, one of the questions that I would have is a number of departments have increased their staffing levels over the last few years. I'd like to know which departments have increased their staffing levels or which ones have decreased their staffing levels. And where was your staffing level at, say, 10 years ago compared to where it is today?
Charlie?
I'd like to see a little overview of these departments when they come in. How many employees they have, payroll range, what their exact mandated services are, what services they're performing now that are non-mandated, so we can ascertain where we start from. I know in our strategic plan, we also talked about looking at floor space and some things like that. I wonder if we can build some of that into this analysis as far as where they're located, these departments, how much floor space they take up, how many employees, so forth. We might find a couple outliers where we can save some space or something like that. And also, Nora, are we going to get into some things like with the courts, for example, this defined benefit, defined contribution situation we have? Are we going to take that on, or do we not want to do that this time?
I believe that has to be negotiated with the labor union. We don't have that ability to make that change without negotiations.
Are we going to bring it up?
Absolutely, but it's still.
Are you going to bring it up? How are we going to do that?
We, we can certainly have that discussion when we have the circuit court judges in here because they're the only ones that are involved.
That was one that sticks in my mind. There might be others. But are we going to enter into some of these other things and look at some of this stuff? Or are we just going to look at these departments as they are, what they perform, and if they think they can cut three and a half percent or something?
Yeah, I think it's important we do bring it up. All right, Chris?
Speaking of the defined benefit, defined contribution that Commissioner Rennie just spoke about, Dean, what I would like from you is when, if you can tell me, or go back as far as you can, when did, when did Grand Traverse County start a defined benefit pension?
2001.
I'm sorry?
2001. It ended.
2001, we started a defined benefit package?
Defined contribution.
Defined, no, defined contribution.
Okay, see, no, my, my question was defined benefit.
That was 2000.
Okay. And, and then I would like to know, I would like to see the defined benefit contribution and the pension contributions that we have made every year as far back as you can go. Now, I did see on the website today that you've got, yes, on the website, there's 2000 and 2001. But that's all there is. That's all that I saw. And...
As far as our contributions, you mean?
Yeah, pension contributions. And it's a, just a copy of a computer page. And I will show it to you after the meeting if you'd like to see what I, what I'm looking for.
That, that won't be, I know what you're asking for.
You know, I figured you would, but just in case. And I guess that's it.
Dan?
I would like to see us grapple with some more basic, broad brushstrokes ideas between ourselves before we bring in each department. Simple things like getting a grip on how big this problem really is. Getting some numbers, big numbers we all agree on. For instance, how much money do we think we're going to bring in in 2014? And then say to ourselves, what programs, what departments and services prioritize those? And then say to ourselves, how much money are willing to spend on each of these sets of services? So that we have some idea amongst ourselves what core services that we really want to keep. I don't think I need to hear from all of these 30 departments to know the basic things on that. And I, I think we should grapple with that first. Get, get some big numbers we agree on, like, you know, how much, you know, we look about in 2014, 2015, there's a lot of stuff we haven't talked about. And even though we can't put our number, our finger in the number exactly, we should have some idea what it could cost us. Like, what might it cost us about the, the vets not having to pay taxes on their houses? What is it going to cost if we don't get revenue sharing? How much do we think insurance might go up? We've got to look at least three to five years in the future. And I think having some, you know, how much do we have to save out of this budget for the next three to five years, year after year? I haven't heard that number yet. So, when we're bringing in all these people, we don't know what kind of template to put on that situation. So I, I'd like to see us grapple with these basic things first, come to an agreement, then bring in the groups.
I have one more request. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The other question I have for Dean, and I neglected to mention it. Dean, I would like to know when we began to become underfunded on our pensions? And by how much? By every year?
We have that.
Okay, thank you.
Probably from the get-go.
Larry?
Well, just to bring something up that you have always advocated, as I've known you as a county commissioner for the 10 years that you've served on the Board of Commissioners, I think total, or more. This is your 12th, I think, year. And that has always been, can we ever get to a stage where we could have at least a working two-year budget? And so we would do more, a little more forecasting than 12 months. And then find ourselves at the end of the year going, oh my, what are we going to do about next year? So it gets us a little more proactive about the coming year in '15. So, it gets us a little more proactive about the coming year in '15. So, thinking back to what Commissioner Lathrop just indicated was, okay, staff probably has a grapple on, okay, we think we know where '14 numbers needs to be in order to save half or whatever, or two-thirds of our fund balance, if we can make some decisions by the first quarter of the year and make these cuts, and then move forward with '14. But what does '15 look like? And '15 looks like some things that are a bunch of unknowns that we may have to prepare for, like not being fully funded with revenue sharing. Are there some things that are coming up that we know are going to hit us in '15 that we have to prepare for? The administrator has always indicated that, you know, we need to start building up our capital improvement fund, which is dwindling down to zero. Central Dispatch has indicated that they're operating on equipment that eventually need to be, get replaced. There's been this number-one drive by the Board of Commissioners and departments of upgrading technology and scanning records, so we're not using paper, those kinds of things, those innovative things. So, I think there are, like Commissioner Rennie has indicated, there's some broader things that we're going to be confronted with, not only in '14, but '15, '16. And we're going to have to start picking some years to make those decisions about how we're going to fund those things. And I like your idea, Mr. Chairman. I think that the days of trying to plan for 12 months, in our economic environment, our governmental environment, with the federal government and the state government, and dealing with the local economy and how that might rebound or not rebound back, I think we've got to look, we've got to have a broader perspective. And I think we, at a minimum, we're going to have to shoot for a two-year budget. I don't know how we can do that, but I like your idea of trying to accomplish that.
Chris?
Every time one of the commissioners mentions something, something comes to mind with me. Tomorrow, tomorrow, no, I'm sorry, Friday, I have a Michigan Association of Counties Economic Development Committee meeting. I am not driving to Lansing. I am going to, I've asked administration to set up a telephone conference for me upstairs, and it's Friday morning from 10 to 12. And one of the things that, and so if anyone cares to join me Friday morning at that time and listen in on this committee meeting, please feel free to do so. One of the things I'm going to bring up is exactly what Commissioner Inman just said, is the revenue sharing. I read in the Record Eagle that the state of Michigan now suddenly has a budget surplus, and they're talking about reducing taxes, which is wonderful, but they gave us, they gave counties a promise of revenue sharing, and counties have built that into their budgets. And I think, well, I don't think, I know I'm going to be talking to Mac about that Friday morning.
Great point.
So, if anyone cares to join me, please feel free.
Talk about them paying for the veterans' taxes too.
I will.
Instead of dumping that on us.
So, that's two things you need to learn to involve.
It's right here.
Okay. Dan?
Well, it looks like, when I see all these questions that all of us have, they're good ones, and I think that could be, if we could remember them and reiterate it to staff, a lot of that could be done on paper in the next couple of weeks, wouldn't require a meeting yet. And then we could come back together, having studied those documents, and start making our decisions from there.
Yeah, I think there's some good questions here. You know, most of them, you've already hit the questions that I had. You know, I think the only other one is, do you work with other departments and what is the impact that you have working with those other departments? We saw that with GIS, that when we, the recommendation was, is that we eliminated one of their positions, we find out that they're so intricately woven into all the other departments, that it's nigh on impossible to be able to cut somebody's net budget. So, I think, you know, that's one of the questions that should be asked, is how are you working with other departments and how do you affect those departments? Same thing with, like, the treasures office, when you've got only four employees in there, and all of a sudden, you know, somebody's on lunch, somebody's, it could be sick, somebody on vacation, and you've got one person guarding their vault. You know, that's not really a good safety situation. So, I think, you know, those are the kind of things that we have to become aware of in our discussion from each of these individual departments. But I, what I'd really like to do is kind of schedule ourselves for what do we want to see for Friday's meeting? Let's look at, let's, we've already got today's meeting, that's what we're going to try and do and plan. So, what is it you would like to see for Friday's meeting? And there's some good things that have come on there, and, you know, asking Dean to be able to come up with the unfunded pension liabilities, unfunded health insurance liability, what is the cost of the tax payment? I'm not sure he's going to be able to get that, but we can start to look toward that. Trying to plug in some figures for a budget, I'm not sure we can ask them to do that within the next three days. You know, that's kind of overloading that department, too. So, but I think, you know, we have to be conscious of how much pressure we're putting onto the employees as we're doing this, but also we have to be able to continue to keep into our schedule so that we can get this thing done.
Sonny, hit his hand up.
Go ahead, Sonny. We have to know, have a list of the services that we are providing. Without that, we cannot even begin to try to prioritize what we want to continue to do.
We can do that.
Can you get that by Friday?
Well, I think we already have that list. Pretty well-developed.
I think we're pretty close.
Back when you did your prioritization in previous year, you had a list of services by department. Probably not completely, it's not totally complete, it's not, you know, down to, you know, excruciatingly fine detail, but it's, it's better than, you know, it's pretty broad-stroke.
It'll certainly give us a first step. And then the other piece of that list is to try to identify which of these services are mandated and which of them are optional. You know, we have, we have multiple different lists, these are mandated services. If we can try to consolidate this thing in some fashion, if you can look at one list, these are the services that, you know, the Register of Deeds Office provides, these are mandated services, these are not. You know, these are what the clerk does, these are mandated services, these are not.
But we also need to know how much they cost and how many people they serve.
Well, you know, somehow or another, we need to determine whether or not they're a priority to even have the service in the first place. Because I don't care if it only costs us a couple thousand dollars, if it's something that we shouldn't be doing, then we can look at it.
But I think the other thing, though, is that we have to make a determination is, are we going to listen to all these presentations, get all these questions, and then the last meeting would be the one that we could do this? Or are we going to try and do it piecemeal? Dan?
I'm just hoping that we'll grapple with this basic stuff that Sonny's bringing up, some of the basic things I bring up for a meeting or two, and then decide. I don't want to schedule people to come in before we've, we've gelled our thoughts as a board. I don't want to listen to all those people right now. I want to have a template that we've all agreed on. How much, how much is it that we need to come up with and what our priorities are? Before, before we see all those people.
Dean, how much information can you and Dave be able to give us by Friday? This is some of the questions that have been asked.
Maybe Dean can interrupt, but I think that we've got the, we've got the list of the services. We don't have a list of how, you know, we don't have how many people it serves because, you know, those, the departments would have a lot of that information. Obviously, we can't give you any, you know, what would impact any of these things, you've got to get that information from departments. If you were to ask them to cut 5% or whatever, where would you cut? We can give you a list of all the departments, we basically give you the staffing for all departments for the last 10 years. We've pretty much got that together. We can give you the list of appropriations for the DB plan, how we got the $41 million we had at the end of last year, and I'm expecting that number to be more like $51 million this year because the stock market did so well.
You mean 41 million?
We had 41 million at the end of 2012.
All right. And you're thinking it'll be 30?
And that earned 25%? That's a lot of money. So, that, you know, and we're, Dr. Dan's point is well-taken. I mean, there's a lot of things that change between last year and this year, you know, just in six months. You know, we were assuming we were going to spend $625,000 out of the 2013 budget. We probably won't do that. We know that that 625 represents full employment, and we expect not to spend that, but we actually might do better than that. So, there might be actually some money that we can put toward the deficit of 2013, or 2014. The extremely good investment performance of 2013 is going to have an effect on our payments for our retirement, for our DB retirement plan in 2015. So, that, that's going to affect us going forward, and structurally. That will bring that number down because, you know, we're averaging it out over 10 years, and it's going to make it so that we're probably not going to go up by $200,000, we're probably going to go down, which is a good thing. You know, our assumptions are now changing. Revenue sharing, we know, you know, I have no expectation the state of Michigan's going to spend that money on anything to do with counties. They're going to welch on their deal with us. They've already indicated that's what they're going to do, and I don't see anybody jumping up to the podium to say, that's what we ought to do with this money. I just don't think it's going to happen. We can fight for it, but they're not going to do it. Don't want to be gloom and doom.
I'm not going to hold my breath.
Yeah, don't hold your breath.
I said that to begin.
So, there's some things that, that are changing so that we can look at. And so, on the one hand, that's a really good thing to do right now, since we haven't addressed the use of fund balance that we put into that budget at the end of last year, in the 2014 budget. We might be able to bring that number down so that you have a better number to grapple with than 950,000 or whatever the number was. We might be able to drop that by a few hundred thousand dollars. That would be nice.
Sonny?
I guess, you know, just to touch a little bit on what you just talked about, too, Dave, is the fact that we budgeted $625,000 worth of fund balance in the 2013 budget. In all likelihood, we're probably going to get, you know, I don't know, Dean, what, 700,000 back from departments that they didn't actually expend out of their budgets this year?
We don't have the number, Dave. You don't have the number, do you?
Well, we won't know for sure until we have the year closed, which will take until the end of the month. But as Dave said, I mean, right now, it's looking like, even though you budgeted to use 625,000 in fund balance in 2013, we'll have the same, well, a similar year to last year where we did the same. You budgeted 625, and we added to the fund balance a little over 200,000. Whether or not we add 200,000, I don't know. We have some items that we really can't determine at this point, but it's not likely that you're going to use that fund balance in 2013.
Right. Well, I guess my point is, even though we budgeted $625,000 of fund balance, realistically, we're going to grow our fund balance at the end of 2013.
That seems to be the case.
Which seems to be the case, because, and we all know that we use very conservative numbers when we draw these budgets. One of the things that I don't want to get to the point is that we go in and we chop these budgets to these departments to the point that they get the attitude, you know, that, you know, if I don't spend it, by God, they're going to take it away from me, so I'm going to make sure I spend every dime in our budget. You know, I, I don't want to get to that point. And I think, you know, previously, historically, we've always had very good, very good cooperation with all of our departments. They buy what they need to, and they turn the money back in at the end of the year if they didn't need it. So, you know, that's, that's how we've grown our fund balance from a million dollars in 2003 to eight and a half million dollars in 2013. And over 10 years, we've grown our fund balance by eight million dollars with conservative numbers, conservative spending.
Larry?
Just to give some perspective on history, and I think history is important to understand, that, you know, we've done a number of things here at the Board of Commissioners over the last 20 years to improve our economic situation here in the county. You know, we've, have a fully funded delinquent tax fund, we have eight million dollars in a fund balance, which many counties don't have hardly any. We have a double-A bond rating. We've done some great things over the last couple of years without asking taxpayers for additional money. We've expanded the jail by 40 beds, we've combined our law enforcement center, we've built a new health administrative building here recently, we've, we've acquired another administrative building right next door to it. You know, we have restored the historical courthouse and renovations, we've done the district court building, the combination of the two churches and the new building, all by properly planning and meanwhile, building up our reserves to the point we're at. We work, we were and are considered in the state one of the best managed, best financially secured counties in the state of Michigan. And we have a reputation of doing things right here in Grand Traverse County. We have, we have a reputation of being very innovative. We have, when we, when, when there's a conference in Lansing or a conference in Naco, who do they call? They call Grand Traverse County to come in and do presentations about what you guys are doing right that everyone else can learn from. And so, we've always been actively involved in Mac and Naco for those reasons. So, you know, we've, we've set the pace. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't learn from other counties or other governmental units about how well they're doing things, and we can take, you know, a club from their, you know, from their game and do things better. And I want to just make that point. The second point is that, you know, when Dennis Alloia was here for 10 years, he made a statement that I'd never forgot, and that was, even though we have to cut our budget and make structural changes going forward, we should not bury our heads in the sand and stop being the best in the state. That means if we're going to have less services, less programs, but we're going to be, still be the best, we're still going to have the best talent, the best technology, and the best-run departments, and we can showcase our, what we do in our county to all the counties in the state and to, and nationally. And that means being involved, that means being innovative, that means commissioners taking time to get involved with their state and national organizations that we're, that we are involved in, and being progressive, and we're, and continue to do things that other people will look to as, you know, we're still operating among the best, among the state. So, these decisions that we make going forward, I know will be hard and difficult, but I think we, from my perspective is, is when we get done doing these cuts, they'll be painful, we'll have less staff, but what we need to do is make sure that we set ourselves in a positive position going forward in the future, where we're able to afford the best, you know, the technology our staff needs, and that we have buildings that are efficiently run, and that we have the best staff members, and that those members are able to go to training sessions and bring back other ideas and new innovative things to keep us on the forefront. And we just don't sit back and say, you know, we're going to structure ourselves, so, you know, we're going to start sliding, and we're not going to be considered the best anymore. So, I want, I want everyone to, at least from my feeling, is that when we make these structural changes, I don't want any of that stuff to go away. It'll be challenging, it'll be difficult. And with that remark, I would make a suggestion. I've looked at the old, you know, as you know, I've been chairman twice, I know the county board of commissioners' side of the budget by the back of my hand, and I've recently went and reviewed that again. And I did speak with the chairman over the phone, if you'll allow me, just to speak momentarily on our budget. You know, our budget is compensation to the commissioners, and that is set for the election cycle. According to law, you cannot lower the compensation, you can increase it, but we have not. We have not increased our compensation, compensation since 2001, where other boards and commissions have gone and given themselves raises over that period of time since 2001. To the rate of inflation, we've held the line. We have decreased our benefit structure, we no longer offer spouse and family health coverage. And so, I think we've done a good job as we've gone forward with some of these budget-challenging years and doing our part. The other pieces that are in our budget, we don't really have a control over, that is the accounting, costs of. That is the accounting, costs of doing audits, that's in our side of the budget. It's the liability coverage, you know, for example, with Chris Cook and MMRA, and those dollar amounts are plugged into our budget. And the only thing that we have left to give on is the conference costs that we're actually sending commissioners to conferences. I would be willing to, for '14, for 2014, to attend Naco on my own dollar. And we have in the commissioner's budget, I think, 13,500 for conferences, and we have 10,000 for travel. Part of that 10,000 is commissioners submitting their mileage requests for going back and forth to meetings and stuff like that, which, you know, I think we can shave back part of that and still have commissioners submit mileage for their deals. The other part of that 10,000 was, you know, going back and forth to the conferences like MAC and those kinds of things. But, you know, I can still deduct those expenses from my personal tax return as unfunded expense, training expense that the county wouldn't pay for, just for '14. I know we're looking for structural changes, but people might be looking at us saying, "Well, you know, what are you going to give up?" Well, I think in '14, I think we could give up, if we want to go to a conference, then, you know, personally, I think, I don't have a problem in paying to go to the conference out of my income that I'm receiving here at the county and use that for the training expense, and then I can deduct that off my personal taxes. That's allowable by law. And as Commissioner, the chairman has said, if we incur additional expenses by these budget meetings, we can more than make that up by not spending the conference costs of 13,5 and a little bit of that travel money, that there would be a net gain, savings to the county, and we can help kick that into the bucket for '14. What I don't want to have happen is, it's considered a structural change because I still think, even though I might not be here anymore for the next election and Commissioner Lemco may not be here for the next election, I still think it's important for this Board of Commissioners to be involved with MAC and Naco and our staff members to go to conferences and training sessions and to be on top of technology and to be on top of idea sharing and what other counties are doing so we can be, they can bring that information back. That's part of why we go to those conferences. So, but in '14, I would be willing to say, "Hey, I'll pay my way to Naco and I'll pay my way to MAC." Just, you know, for '14, and then the board can decide in '15 how they want to handle commissioners going to conferences. That's fine with me. But at least we can show that we're giving something back. The rest of it, we really have no effect on our budget at all. We can't do anything.
Dan?
Two things. I want to respond to what you said. I talked to Bob Cooney about this, you know, we can't change our salaries, but he thinks we could change our per diems. For instance, we could put a cap on our per diem or we could put a cap on our mileage or in a voluntary way, we could decide not to take a per diem here and there. So, we do have some choices that we could do this year in addition to what he says. I'm thinking, before we make that decision, we should look at this whole picture.
I agree.
And because, let's pretend we're going to ask everyone to do 5%. Then we should try to do the 5% too. We don't know what we're going to ask people to do yet. We haven't made that choice. So, I'd be comfortable with, as a symbol that we're taking the lead to do what you just said. We can do more later. That's one thing. The next thing about information, that I'd like to see, a simple number. What do we have to spend in 2014 on our services to our county? I want that number. And I know it'll be a moving target, but we should have it. So then we can decide what, how we want to spend it. That's a big number we should know.
2014 and '15 probably?
2014 and '15. I know it's a guess, but as, what I'm seeing in this budget now, it's all a guess to some extent or another.
Chris?
Back in 2010, when Beth Friend was on the board, she did a nine-year spending history and she did some projections. And she certainly is, is and was well qualified to do that. She has a master's degree in economics. And she pointed out, over the nine years, county spending rose an average of 4.4% a year. That was back in 2010. And she did not vote for the budget that year. I did not either, based upon her projections and my projections. And I still have the Record Eagle article here noting that the two commissioners, the females, were the budget hawks. That being said, I want to talk about projections. Dean, in our budget books, obviously, we have different funds. Are there any funds that we have that are not in our budget books, that we are not privy to?
There are some.
Okay. What I would like is, I would like this year's starting balance in our funds, okay? What our revenues are projected to be in those funds, what our expenses are to be in those funds. It seems to me it's a simple Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah, it is. It's on his desk.
Oh, good.
It's not reviewed yet.
Oh, good. Whether we, obviously, I can see on an Excel spreadsheet whether we've got a surplus or a deficit.
Sure.
And what the ending balance is. And then what I would like you to do is put up your magic dartboard and give me an idea what you think those funds will look like next year, year three, year four, and year five.
Well, Dave has already asked me to do that with a summary that
All right.
requested for quite some time. The, so, I'll get to work on that.
In your spare time?
It kind of looks like that.
Charlie, we haven't heard more from you.
As far as the board goes, I think we should encourage MAC, Naco, these sorts of things, all these committees we go to. If you don't think they're necessary, let's forget their per diems and take people off the committees. It's very important to go to Northern Michigan, Naco, and places like this to see what's going on. It's important for our board to have some of that input. I don't think it serves us long-term by using that as a way to save a dollar here and there. We're looking at millions of dollars here. A per diem is 35 bucks. As far as fuel, travel expenses and things like that, if you expect people to go to these meetings, I suggest you pay their fuel at least as a bargain, unless you want to supply vehicles for people to go to these mandated committee assignments and things like that. If you think we're going to nickel and dime on this board and make any big difference, I guess it's symbolic, whatever. I think it's a waste of time.
I haven't heard from you.
Well, I don't, I don't think many people have to go to Naco, you know, one or two maybe, to have a whole gang go.
I agree with that.
That doesn't make sense to me.
I think we should have representation. I think they should be paid for it.
Well, that's fine.
And I think it's important to note that whatever we do, it has to be explicit because your audit committee has to approve the bills. And if you aren't really explicit as to how that should be handled, they aren't going to know what is or what isn't and how it should be handled in their, when they do their, every other week, approving the fees. So, you know, that's a critical piece in there that, you know, each of us have our own way of, that we submit our budgets and, or, I mean, we submit our per diems and our mileage and, you know, the audit committee goes throughs and approves them or disapproves them. That's why it's going to be important that if you do make any changes, that it has to be done. But also, you've got Naco coming up, and if you're going to limit the number of people, we need to do that early because they're looking to have people that are registered now to be able to figure out if they're going to go. If we're going to say, as a board, we only go to pay for one or two and that's all we're going to do, then that's what the board should make that decision of. It shouldn't be, "Well, we think we're going to do this and we're going to do it three or four months from now." That's going to be too late. Chris?
I do think conferences are important, but I don't think it's going to kill anybody to skip one year. That being said, I think we digress here. I think we're getting down into the nitty-gritty and I don't think that we need to do that today. I think we need to get back to the big picture, what we want to see from staff at our next meeting.
Larry?
I agree with you. I just brought that comment up regarding our particular budget. There's not much room. And I agree with Commissioner Rennie on this thing. You know, we've held the line for the Board of Commissioners since 2001 and we've decreased our compensation where everyone else has. You know, $35 a meeting, what we get paid compared with the townships get paid, you know, we're getting paid half of what they have and they have twice as much as benefits. I mean, this is, it's getting to the point of being ridiculous, but, you know, it's hard to get people to come and want to be board, want to run for the office. And I agree with Commissioner Rennie that, you know, if the board feels that, you know, we should, if that's important, I think it really is, that we go to MAC and Naco, that, you know, we pick a couple people to go and we pay for it. I'm fine.
So, Sonny?
A few years ago, we limited travel and per diems per commissioner.
That's the way to do it.
And I don't, so much per each commissioner got, because I can remember having Wayne and Larry whine over which one of them got my extra days because I hadn't used them.
They're all fighting to go to other commissioners, getting their
Because we, each commissioner was given so much money in their travel and per diem budget, and I hadn't expended mine, so we were near the end of the year and Wayne and Larry were both out of money and they got to whine about which one of them got to use my extra days because I could authorize it to them, but they couldn't spend it without having my authorization to use my money.
Let's, I'm going to bring us back, I'm going to bring us back to Friday's meeting's schedule.
Okay.
What do we want on Friday? I have a list of services mandated, no mandated, and staffing planned. Other items that you see that we, that you're going to want to have on that agenda?
Anything that we've asked for that staff already has prepared. And I saw Dean taking notes, so.
So, when, so that when the agenda goes out, you know, we want to be able to give Chris the information so that when we get the agenda, we're going to know what to expect when we get there. So, that's going to have to go out tomorrow. So that's why I'm trying to get this done, so we know exactly where we're going to go for Friday's meeting. Dan?
Dean, you saw that little five-by-five thing there, that simple computation. Is that something you can get ready by Friday?
We may be able to. Just, if I could make a few comments, I mean, most of what you've asked for, we do have information for, but one of the topics that's been mentioned is services. I mean, really, if you define services, the services that Carol and the sheriff provide or Wendy, the health officer, are quite a bit different than the services that a department like Dave, mine, or Jen's provide. We're internal.
Right.
We can give you those services that we do, but I can sit here and tell you right now, and I will provide you with whatever information we have. It's going to be impossible to put costs to some of those services or for me to take my staffing and say, "Okay, how many FTEs in the finance department are doing this particular service, whether it be payroll, accounts payable, billing, grant, compliance, budget?" The system that we have in place right now, fund accounting is just not designed to do that. I mean, if you're looking at the corrections budget in the sheriff's office, I mean, that's a pretty big cost center and I think you're going to be looking at things at that level. But when you get down into some of the services that may be on the list, there's no way by Friday, we're going to be able to associate costs or even in some cases.
If I could, I think, I think the idea there wasn't so much to deal with the cost of some of those integrated services. We absolutely know that there's, you know, there's no way that we can take, you know, finance department, as Dean says, and, okay, figure out how many hours of it goes to paying bills, how many hours goes to managing the insurance, how many hours goes to dealing the deductibles, how much goes to, you know, it's just not possible we can break that out. But there are services that we specifically fund, you know, and if I look at Wendy and say, "Okay, we can identify what the cost to provide WIC services are," you know, and how many people are served by that.
I think the thing
Those are things, those are services that we can put a reasonably close estimate of cost on, but I'm not sure that we can have that information in 48 hours.
Right, to some extent, and especially since, if you're going to try to have this agenda put together by tomorrow, I mean, we're going to be able to provide the staffing, probably the list of services, the pension information, and we'll do our best on whether they're mandated or non-mandated, but it's not going to be complete. There's just, there's not enough time between now and Friday
Just remember that.
To do that.
Chairman, I think there's two things that we're trying to grapple with. One is, what individually do we all want to see for Friday's meeting coming up? Okay? So to give us a basis about how we might want to structure the process moving forward. The other issue is, do we want to wait to get all that information, as much as they can get to us, and then come up with a consensus of what we want to communicate to our department heads? Or do we want to send something, do we want to give direction to Dave now on what the communication is going to be to our department heads of the expectations of what we want to see and give them more time to prepare? Or are we just going to come up with that on Friday?
Actually, I'm hoping to get it done today. So, both items. So, and also, we want to start the schedule for next week Wednesday's meeting so that we can start to alert departments as to what they're going to do. So I'd like, I want to do Friday's meeting, then I want to do Wednesday's meeting, then I want to do the following Friday's meeting. I want to try and get that done today. So we get ourselves, so we're getting ahead of this game. So right now, we're behind. So that's why I'm trying to stay on Friday's meeting. If there's anything more on Friday's meeting that you would like to see us brought together?
I want to make sure.
I want to know how much money we have to spend. Can you get that, Dean?
We'll do our best.
Okay.
Have we answered to staff what our expectations are from the departments?
I have a question.
Well, I think that's
Do you have, do you have that?
What?
Have you grappled our thoughts?
Let's finish this first and then we'll go to that.
All right, because we've been jumping back and forth.
Right, yeah, that's why I'm trying to stay on the Friday's agenda.
All right, okay.
Okay? Anything else that you want to see on Friday's agenda? Okay? Now, the next item is, what are the questions that you would like to ask departments? And we started that list
Or direction.
Or directions to those departments. Chris?
I would like to know when we anticipate that our departments will be able to provide us a list of their services and attach costs to them. I cannot believe that a department head does not know what a service costs. I sincerely hope that that is not correct. I certainly know what the services I buy cost. I have projections of what the services I buy are going to cost and I have, and I worked for 30 years at Shell and I will tell you that those department heads knew what their services cost. In private industry, people know what their services cost. So, that's, I just would like to know when we anticipate we will have, we will be able to attach costs to the services and an estimate of the number of people who are served. Now, I understand that someone like Jamal is going to come and say, "You know what? I have a 911 and I serve 86,000 people in Grand Traverse County."
Or 350,000.
350,000, yeah.
Yes. Visitors, visitors, et cetera, and yes. I understand that that is going to occur.
I'm thinking of how, you know, I want to make this something, a project that's doable and not
I do too.
Isn't going to take
I do too.
More resources than we have available.
Yes.
And so, I'm thinking in, to use Dean's example, you know, he does payroll and accounts payable and grant funding and all kinds of things. And he works with various departments on various things. HR, strangely enough, a lot of the things that are done in HR here are done in the finance department and other places. For example, the benefits are usually a finance function, the payroll is usually a finance function, the payroll is usually a finance function. They're not done in HR. But that's just the way you do it and that's, there's nothing wrong with the way you do it. It's working fine. How much does payroll cost? Well, part of Cindy's time, part of Dean's time, part of Jen's time, part of Sally's time, part of Arlene's time. How much is that cost?
And an IT program.
You know, it takes a little bit of doing to get that. So, the best you can probably get out of Dean is, he can take his budget and he can say, okay, I do this, I do that, I do the other thing, I do that other thing too, and we spend X percent on this and X percent on that and all totals 100%.
And Dave, I understand that.
But that's the best we can do for it.
But unless you attach some kind of dollar figure to what it costs to do payroll, you cannot possibly look at whether or not you're going to outsource it, whether or not that is something, and Shell outsources payroll.
Commissioner.
Microsoft outsources payroll. We may not, it might not be a good idea.
With the help of the departments and the elected officials, we can do that.
Okay.
It won't be done this week though.
I, I understand that. I just want you to hear where I'm going.
I need a list of questions for, I mean, I think, Dave, I think you had some questions that you had put on one of their letters.
I put it on a letter to you quite a while ago.
So, on the back page of what you had as a handout?
Yep.
Is, the suggestion is overview of services provided and dedicated staffing, known or potential concerns that will impact services or revenues, impacts of reduction or elimination of each service area, suggestions for alternative ways of providing current services, and questions from Commissioners.
Yeah, I thought that would be a way to, to conduct these meetings.
So, is this?
That would be something that the departments could, allow them to stretch out and say what, you know, cover these bases and then give you time to.
Okay, Sonny?
Ask questions.
I'd also like to hear if the departments have opportunities for potential revenue. You know, I know we seen a presentation from Sergeant Ritter and the Sheriff a while back about handling their own collections. You know, instead, we sent it to Core Recovery and I, I think this is the last time, if I, if I remember right, Tom, we'd sent them like $300,000 and we got 40, you know, or something like that. Or a million dollars we'd sent over there that we were due and we got 40,000, you know, or some silly ass thing like that. You know, anyway, we get, we, you know, maybe we're better off served by doing our own collection.
Dan.
I like, I like to see Sonny's questions answered by the department. I know we can't do it right now, but that should be something, he brought some great questions, I thought. I think his questions should be answered. Another question I'd like to ask, and I don't, and this, they may not want to answer this one, is what in your department do you think that can be handled by the private sector, like we did with the janitors, for instance?
Larry, you had your hand up next.
Well, you know, if you take a look at these five points, other than the Commissioners' questions, they're very general in nature. And I'd like to see a more targeted question process, and that is, tell us how you can increase revenue. Tell us how you can decrease your expenses by 5%, for example. Tell me how you can, tell me, tell me how you can make your department more efficient by either restructuring it or changing the organizational structure of your department. And can it be more, more efficient not only to you but to the public, for the use, for the public services and uses? And what other innovative ideas can we explore to save the county money and, and be more efficient towards our operations? I mean, that's just, I think we just, those are targeted questions.
Okay, Dan.
And I would say the last question, add on to it, such as outsourcing or merging.
You brought up a big point.
Sonny.
I hesitate to say specifically, how do you cut the 5%? Because for the last 10 years, we've been going to all of the departments to say, well, we need 2% this year, we need 2.5%, we need 5%, we need 3%. I don't want to do that. I don't want a target number because I think we need to make structural changes. If we just do a target number and they just cut it to, cut the 5%, and then we turn around and we start looking at the 2015 budget and we say, okay, now I need another 5%, then why the hell didn't you just ask me for 10% last year? You know, I, I'm hesitant to do that, that target percentage thing. I think we've, I think we've percentage all these budgets to the point, we can't do that anymore. We just simply cannot go to every department and say, we need, across the board, we need 5%. We simply have to look at each of these departments on an individual basis as far as what's gonna be cut. Because we've done the percentage thing over and over and over. We're at the point now, we're just gonna have to decide, look, we're no longer going to do that. You know, now, I don't want to get to a point, and you've all heard me say repeatedly, the only way we can cut this kind of money is by somebody losing their job. I don't want to get to a point where I tell the Sheriff, you've got to get rid of two road patrols. I'm willing to get to a point where I tell the Sheriff, okay, I need two positions out of your department. You figure out where you're gonna get them.
Chris.
Well, I want to bring it back to not cuts but keeps. Let's focus on the results that we get for the money that we spend. And the only way we are going to find that out is to attach what we spend for a particular service and, as Sonny said, and how many people do we serve. And one of the things that Sonny brought up in our discussion was back when we extended an MSU program a couple of years ago. And we found out how few people that program served and we eliminated it. But, you know, unless we, let's focus on the results that we're getting for the money we're spending. Focus on keeps. Let's start there.
Dan.
And when you, these questions that David has suggest we might ask, we should also indicate we want structural changes as much as possible versus, I can save money by not buying a car this year.
Right.
Okay, it needs to be structural changes that keep on going for the next five years or so.
Good point. Charlie, anything else?
I'm kinda with the folks at Watts to look at what's mandated so we can do some prioritization. Straight across the board, cuts don't make any sense right now, honestly. You can't do that. If we're gonna do that, let's make the cut today and let's go home.
Yeah, I think, I think you guys are right.
Yeah. So, we need some prioritization here as well to decide how and where.
It's a good way to put it.
Just saying, what we're getting for our dollar, what's working, what's not working. To go in and just say, hey, we want to chop this or that off, I don't see the imagination there or the vision to get us down the road to where we improve this situation instead of sitting here every year.
Didn't we do some of that when we did our strategic plan?
We talked, but we never.
Well, we've never, you wanted to carry that strategic plan to the next level?
Well, I brought that up earlier today by saying, should we build some more of that strategic plan into what we're gonna try to get out of these departments, but I'm sort of shut down on that, so.
I think strategic plans should be implemented as part of what we're doing here. That's why I'm asking that question.
It's our priorities.
We all get there, Dan.
Yeah.
Sonny?
Well, you know, if we go back to the strategic plan, you know, and, you know, Charlie's right in that regard. Our strategic plan goal number one, the first three things are implement a three-year budget, implement a five-year capital budget, and collaborate with other governmental units. And we, you know, we're still here, sitting on our own little chair trying to figure out how we're, how we're doing with this and we're not getting there. You know, we, if these are not truly in fact our pri, our number one strategic goal in our first three steps to do that, then we need to change the plan.
So, how soon can we get a three-year plan?
We have to roll the, the information that we just input into the system, into the, this tool that we use, and we can produce that. I mean, I can tell you what it's gonna look like.
It's gonna be ugly. It's gonna be ugly, I know. But that's okay.
Look at it.
But that's okay.
That's all right. We gotta start somewhere.
Yeah.
Start with the facts.
It's on the to-do list, you know, but we are bumping up against year-end now. I mean, it's a higher priority for the Finance Department to close the books than it is to dabble with these new items. It takes time to do those things and he hasn't got whole days to carve out.
Got it.
Dean already works 12 hours a day.
I'm giving him a.
What, 20-hour day.
Yeah, I'm cutting Dean some slack on this. So, we, but we know it's on our list to get it done. We just know that it's gonna be an ugly look. And I would like to say one thing about Sonny's comment on the 5% reductions. I've been using the chair as an example. You know, when you cut 5%, you say, well, you know, we got five, we got a chair in that supplies budget, we're gonna cut the supplies budget and take that out of there and we aren't gonna buy that chair. And the chair's still gonna be 15 years old and somebody's still gonna be sitting on it and they're still gonna be doing their job from that chair. And maybe they'll get back pains and they'll go to the chiropractor and get fixed, but, you know, they also might get carpal tunnel or what, I mean, eventually you gotta replace the chair. And taking the 5% cut moves you to that, not to the structural change that needs to be made to make a permanent 5% cut, not just a temporary one, that you're just putting off your problem for another year. And we have a lot of problems that have been put off for another year and that's why I call these structural deficits.
They are.
Because they really, we really need an extra million dollars in our budget to have enough room to start thinking about funding the 911 stuff properly, funding the reclassification study, funding the, you know, you go on and on and on. You can come up with a lot of things that aren't funded properly yet.
Those are the numbers we need now. You know, in the next couple of weeks, we need those numbers because any changes we decide, if we don't have those in mind, we'll have to, we'll have to do this silly stuff again next year. And I want to make another point, the one I forgot.
Okay.
I'd rather have us not do something than do it poorly. Okay, so if we're gonna do something halfway, I think we just drop it and do what we, do the core things that our citizens want and do it well. I look at it this way, that we should be providing the services our citizens want at a price where they're willing to pay. And I would say, they're not willing to pay more than they paid in 2013. So, we gotta stay pretty much in that budget. That's why I want that big number, so.
Chris.
Well, organizations really exist to meet a human need versus wants. And we, that's something that we have to look at. That's part of our role as leaders, in my opinion. You know, the wants, you see them every day. That's why candy bars are in the checkout lines of grocery stores. They're the wants. So, I appreciate Commissioner Wheelax, let's take a look at our services. What are mandated, what are not? It's an excellent start.
Sounds good.
So, we've got a list of questions. Is everybody comfortable with the list of questions that you'd like to ask?
And I'm, and I agree with Commissioner Rennie. I mean, I just threw out 5%. It's just a throw out. I mean, I didn't mean it as, as an item, but I don't think we're expecting people to come in with, with, everyone come in with 5%. You're exactly right and he's exactly right. That's just gonna save us one year. We need, we need to know what, what's mandated, what's not mandated, what's priority, what's not a priority, what's being used, what's not being used. And then we need to make structural changes, not one-year changes. And I agree with Commissioner Rennie on that.
So, you want to spend your time on Friday and next week Wednesday doing those two, those two items?
Yes.
That's fine.
You're allowed to speak.
That's fine. So, so then on the following Friday, then we should start looking at what programs or services that we want to have people come in to talk to us. Then let's figure out who you want first, second, and third.
And I, more importantly, I really want to know how much time.
Well.
I'm not ready for dog and pony shows right now.
Once you identify those, we have to know how much time you want to put towards those so we can schedule them and give you a, you know, schedule for each meeting.
I would like information before we start scheduling dog and pony shows. I see no reason to spin, Department Heads' times, they've got other things to do right now. We've got major questions that we want information on. Let's take a look at our information first before we start bringing people in here and taking up their time and ours unnecessarily.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I just, I'm just trying to look farther down the road there, that, you know, I don't think we should take, it shouldn't take more than a couple of meetings if we can get the right information. So, you know, Friday and Wednesday's meeting is going to be covered with the stuff that we just talked about. And then the following Friday's meeting, you know.
We'll start bringing departments in, you feel?
Well, that's what I was thinking, is whether or not we want to start bringing a department in at that point. I mean, we can always change the schedule. I mean, we don't set anything in stone here. But if we say, you know, the first person you want to see is the Sheriff Department, or the, or the first person you want to see is Resource Recovery, or, I, I'd like to go through that list and, and so you guys can, and if you don't give it to me today, you have to have it done by Friday.
Okay.
So, look at that list and prioritize your departments that you think you'd like to see so that we can at least start to do that agenda for the week, for the following week on Friday. We don't have to do it today, but at least get yourself thinking in those directions. Sonny?
Well, I think we have a couple of departments, you know, primarily the Sheriff, the Courts, and the Health Department. They're gonna take extensive amount of time to have, you know, the necessary discussion. I think there's a number of departments that we can deal with very quickly.
Some of them we don't have anything to do.
You know, some of them, some of them, there will be just minimal things that we have to talk about. Resource Recovery, Construction Code are both enterprise funds. There's no reason we, I'm not even sure there's any reason for them to even come in here.
Commission on Aging.
You know, Commission on Aging is another enterprise fund for practical purposes.
Pavilions.
The pavilions. You know, these are things that are involved in our budget that we don't, haven't even talked about. You know, when we talk about the Health Department, you know, we, we, there is so many different facets of the Health Department that have nothing to do with our general fund budget. You know, the Road Commission is part of our budget, as far as the end results of our budget, but we don't do anything with it. So, you know, we need to, but I think there's a number of departments that we can deal with very quickly. And maybe that's the thing to do with that, that meeting a week from Friday, Herb, is to try to clean those up. And maybe next, either on Friday of this week or on next Wednesday, we can consolidate that list of those half a dozen departments that we don't believe that there's any reason that we need to even bring them in here.
So, you want to start with the simple stuff? Is that what you're saying?
I think in order to move forward, we're better off to start with the simple stuff. I don't want, I don't want to spend the next three weeks arguing about the Sheriff's budget and we haven't gotten anywhere yet.
That might be good.
Go ahead, Dan.
That might be a good idea because it'll also help us figure out what kind of questions we want to ask and, you know, gel our team.
And I'm not, I'm not sure that we may not want to ask some questions from those people, but I don't think we need to schedule blocks of time for them. Okay, Dan, Dave.
It's interesting that you'd throw the Commission on Aging in there because we did have quite a budget issue with them last year. And that issue had to do with the Area Agency on Aging appropriation, the appropriation for Meals on Wheels. And they suggested to the Board of Commissioners that, they don't want to take that money out of their money, which is the Board of Commissioners' millage levy for senior services. They want, they wanted to take it out of the general fund. So, in that, you know, that's a perfect example. We have many examples just like that one where there are millage funds or there are funds that are restricted for one reason or another that we could actually charge general fund. We could move general fund dollars to have it paid for from those special funds, but we're just taking it up on ourselves to let the general fund eat the cost. And there's a number of places that that happens. You know, community policing officers, we're doing the same thing with township officers. They say, well, we don't want to have to pay your 22% increase in health insurance. Okay, we'll pay it for you. That's what we're doing. I mean, those are budget decisions that have an impact on how much you have to spend.
Yeah.
My job has always been, as a county administrator, to free up as much general fund money as I can free up. Find a way to make those guys pay for it if I can, when we have services that are, you know, funded like that. So, anyway, that's what I throw out there.
So, what, what is.
My point is, my point is that the Commission on Aging maybe still should be considered as somebody you need to talk to.
The Commission on Aging, I'm not sure is an enterprise fund. I really am not.
No, it's a special, it's a millage-funded special revenue fund.
I was wondering, maybe you need to tell us what you think those things are.
Well, we're gonna go through that with each department as we go through these lists. There's, some of them, like you say, you can dispose of them very quickly. Resource Recovery, and there's a, you know, what's there to say about TC Talis and, you know, those kind of appropriations? We can talk about those and get those done in one day.
So, if we say, we don't want to see department.
So if we say, we don't want to see Department X, you will speak up and say, we should because we've got some funds we need to talk about.
Or we may, we may just section those off and say, we're going to talk about those on this day. We don't actually need a dog and pony show. We'll just talk about, why are we giving money to Rural Fire? And why are we giving money to TC Talis? And why are we doing the fireworks? And why are we doing, and we'll just talk about what it is we do and why we do it.
So let's schedule that for Friday?
Whether we want to keep doing it.
Not this Friday, but the following Friday. Charlie?
So then going forward, we're going to know ahead of time what departments we'll see at these meetings.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Okay. But we want to do that, correct? So we know what to ask and so forth?
But, you know, but they're suggesting is that the following Friday, that we talk about all these little projects, these little departments and all that kind of stuff. And so we can say, staff, we want you to bring this information in on these departments, and they can talk about those, not bringing department heads in for those. But talk about what the impact is, why are we doing it, and all that kind of stuff. And then we can decide here, is that one of those services we want to continue to provide, or do we want, we want to say, yeah, we're going to cut that one?
Okay. But we will have...
But we'll have that list.
What we'll discuss before each meeting.
We'll start that list. Yeah.
You know, if I, if I could add, you know, just looking at my budget book real quick. Brownfield, you know, is not a general fund thing. Child care fund's not something we have anything to do with. The bill, that we, we can set anything as far as changing the budget. The building authority, you know, those are, those are all set.
I'm going to ask Dave to put together that list for the Friday schedule.
Okay.
If you can do that, Dave, I would appreciate that. So that we, you can go through each of those and say, these are items we can just talk about, make that list, make that as part of our budget or of that, of that particular agenda.
These 30 departments are going to come down to 10 that we have to discuss the most.
Right. Chris?
I respectfully disagree with my board members. I think we need to start where we plan to focus, where we're going to spend most of our money. I have no objection to starting with enterprise funds. That being said, because they are enterprise funds. But I would like to start our discussions with the sheriff. And I would like to start our discussions with the health department. And I would like to start our discussions with the courts before we get down to the rest of the other departments. All that being said, I would like to note that the $7,000 appropriation for AAA, Area Agency on Aging, is in this year's budget in the Commission on Aging.
I know.
And Meals on Wheels is in the budget for Commission, from Commission on Aging this year. And we also have a Commission on Aging board. So if we are going to discuss the Commission on Aging budget, please consider bringing in the Commission on Aging board. We did pass a resolution saying that we would have an open discussion with the board. So that, that's my two cents.
Well, the following Friday is what I'm scheduling now so that we can get into the smaller departments and get that taken care of. Then the following Wednesday, then we can start to do a department by department and whether or not, and so you can let me know, let Dave know, or Chris to be able to know who you want to see first, second, third, and fourth. When we get done with our meeting next week, Wednesday, we should be able to do a budget, what the agendas are going to be for the following week, Wednesday and Friday. Does that sound like a good plan?
Yeah.
My suggestion would be that we put those larger departments that are going to take extensive discussion on Friday.
That's fine.
Because otherwise, we're going to run into our 6 o'clock regular meetings.
Oh, yeah. That's a good, good thought, Sonny.
Good point. Okay. Friday's the larger budgets. Is that all right with you, Ms. Wendy? And how about you, Mr. Sheriff?
That's fine, but we need to have some say in the days because I have some days that my client and personnel are not available.
We'll work on it. So, would you rather do Wednesday or Friday?
A short-term finance person.
It really doesn't make any difference.
Okay. Advance notice and some time.
A little time to prepare.
Yeah. That's, I think that's important, that's trying to get this thing going so that we can tell these larger budgets, department heads, hey, you got, you got two weeks to build a plan, or you got three weeks to build a plan. And so that they can start to get their stuff together today, knowing that they're going to be there. And that's why I'm really trying to nail down what these agendas are going to be in your future. So, Dan?
I just saw a point of information and clarity. You're saying we're going to actually see these departments, they're going to, they're going to show up and talk to us, right? Starting next Friday?
Starting the, the following Friday. No.
Not this Friday, but the Friday after. We'll start seeing people at the podium.
No. Friday is the, this Friday, they're going to have a list of services mandated, non-mandated, staffing, pensions, and how much to spend. That's what we're going to do. Then Wednesday, we're going to start talking about, they're going to continue doing that process.
Right. We're going to be grappling.
Yeah. And then the following Friday, we're going to have the small departments, the staff is going to bring the small departments in there.
We're actually going to be seeing people outside of this, this group?
We won't be, not for that following Friday.
We may or we may not.
We may or may not. Depends on staff.
Okay.
And then the following Wednesday, we have to be able to, to start to be able to have, if we're going to have department heads come in.
Okay.
And we're trying to try to do the larger departments on Fridays. So staff now can start to do an agendas, putting each of these things down in line so that we can have that in place. And I'm just trying to give them direction to be able to do that. So, you know, we're, we're getting there. I'm impressed. And that's, that's where I wanted to go. Mr. Thomas?
Here's one little item on this list, the township fire. That should just be removed because that's just a pass-through. Rural Fire pays every penny of that.
Dave will have that on his list.
Yes, they do. They always have.
If, if any of that pension's unfunded...
Huh?
If any of that pension is unfunded, then they are not.
Well...
And I don't know that question yet.
You charge them for it.
We changed that formula a few years ago to try to make sure that we were covering all the legacy costs.
Yeah.
And, you know, I...
I want to, I want to see it.
Well, the question is, is that, that we'd like to see it. So that's fine. We want to respect everybody's wishes so that if somebody has a particular item, that they want to see something in it, please let us know what that is. We're not going to say, no, you can't do that.
Can't see it.
Okay?
Thank you.
So we have Friday's agendas taken care of, we have next week Wednesday's agenda taken care of, we have the following week Friday's agenda taken care of. Staff will then prepare how the rest of the agendas will start to come together. Is that where we're going?
Yep. And just a reminder to staff, if we could just put a little note there, we need to have your staff people repost our meetings for these different times so we don't miss that.
They're going to know that.
Chris has already got that.
That's on the list.
Yeah. Other things that you'd like to see, Dave?
Do you want all those questions that you, I'm going to take all these questions that I wrote down that you wanted to see in this, that you wanted the department heads to address when they came in?
Bring that with...
I'm going to put it on this, I'm going to redraft this letter for you for Friday, and then you can look at it.
Right. And then we can cross out, add to, or whatever we want to, onto that list.
Yeah. Add to it, subtract from it. So it'll be a little bit better than it was.
All right. The other thing to remember is R and A meeting is next week Wednesday. If you have something that goes on that agenda, make sure you get that on that agenda today so she can get that out tomorrow. So RMNA is, the chairman is...
He, right here.
Larry. So Larry's got that. So make sure that Larry, you got that stuff in there.
I'll make a note on the calendar to make, to get with him tomorrow.
Okay. So that, you know, Chris has that information in there.
Yep.
Anything else that we need to discuss at this point? Staff, do you have any questions, any concerns? Any commissioners have any questions or any concerns of what we're doing?
No. Good conversation. This is great.
Okay.
Think we can get a casino license?
Okay. If that's the, I'm going to then go to the second public comment. Is there anybody from the public like to make a comment?
You'll have to line up.
Greg Pash, 503 West 8th Street, Traverse City. Insanity is doing the same thing and expecting different results. And to me, it sounds like a lot of what you're trying to do is the same thing you've always done. The one thing that, looking at the services you provide is good, actually prioritizing your services, what you really want, what's really most important, that, that was a good move. And then the other thing with, so there's three main things. Get a grip, set a price, set your priorities, say how much you're going to give to each priority, and then you try to figure out how, how you can, with the money that you've assigned to the priorities, figure out how you get the most for your money. The get the grip is basically comes down to the, the matrix of your, your beginning balance, your revenues, your expenditures, your final balance, and you do that for five years. That's going to tell you what you're really looking at, and that's going to help you understand how hard you're going to have to, have to work at it. I really recommend that you really focus on what you want to keep because if you still go right to these little cuts, your special interests are going to come out of the woodwork, and you're just going to get really bogged down. So you want to really talk mostly about what's really important to do, and what's the most good you can do for the community with the money you have.